I'd like to call to order this meeting of the school district, or School Board of Independent School District 624. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Allison?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Strifogi?
Here.
Thompson here, Arcand?
Here.
Lloyd?
Here.
Daniels?
Here.
I would ask everyone to please stand up, remove your hats for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have before us an agenda this evening. If I could get a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Lloyd and a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Strifogi. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, and we have an agenda. We also have before us a consent agenda, which is the various things that come before us monthly, such as minutes and field trips and donations. And I don't know if you all saw, board members, there were a lot of donations this week for Teacher Appreciation Week. So as always, we are so grateful for the generosity of our community. If I could get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Any discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Allison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strifogi?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
And the motion passes. We have a consent agenda. Thank you. It is now time for the public forum portion of the meeting. There were no requests submitted to speak. So we will move into our informational items. Informational item C1, student recognition. Dr. Kasmatzek.
Thank you Chair Ellison, members of the board. Our student recognition video tonight honors students who represent the district in state and national level competitions in archery, boys' basketball, and History Day. Well done, students, and thank you to the staff and family members who supported the students along the way. Go Bears and roll the video.
Good. Thank you. Congratulations, students. One more time. We can watch it again. All right, we'll move on to informational item C2, a recognition of student liaisons to the board.
All right, the White Bear Lake Area School Board would like to commend and recognize Lauren Collier, 12th grade student, and Arianna Van Cook, 11th grade student, for their outstanding roles as the 22, 23 student representatives on the school board. So we have a gift for you. I don't think Ari is here, but we have a gift for you.
Thank you.
And maybe we should gather for a photo.
Yeah, let's do that.
Is this probably your last meeting, or will you be at the next one perhaps? This is probably our last photo op, so let's take a quick photo.
Thank you very much.
Lauren, we've really appreciated having you up here with us this year, and what are your plans for next year?
I will be heading to the University of Connecticut, UConn, and I'll be majoring in medical laboratory science, pre-med.
That's fantastic. And we look forward to having Ari with us next year. All right, we'll move into informational item C3, the student report and superintendent report.
All right, Lauren, kick it off.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Well, everyone at school is super excited as summer is approaching quickly. I know especially the seniors, everyone has their countdown to graduation as the days tick by. But between that, AP testing and prom this past weekend has been keeping everyone busy. Some upcoming sports this week, our boys' lacrosse is playing Roseville on Wednesday, and girls' lacrosse plays Irondale this Friday at 5:30. And go Bears for my last time.
Thanks, Lauren. I'll just roll into my report.
Excellent.
All right, so we recently received the district's 2022 four-year graduation rate data from the Minnesota Department of Education. The district's rate tops the state's graduation rate by almost five and a half percentage points, with 89.1% of 2022 seniors earning their diploma within four years in White Bear Lake area schools. The 2022 graduation rate at South Campus is 95.7%. The area learning center recorded the second highest graduation rate compared to ALCs in our surrounding area at 63.9%. The complete press release can be found on the district website. Willow Lane Elementary 5th graders will be taking over local restaurant Donatelli's in White Bear Lake by working as the cooks, servers, and hosts from 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. on Tuesdays, May 2nd, 9th, 16th, and 23rd. Community members are invited to stop by for lunch to support both the students and Donatelli's. Their guaranteed service with a smile and excellent food and possibly a joke or two, depending on your server. Congratulations to the six finalists and to all of this year's nominees in the White Bear Lake area educators' Teacher of the Year process. And a very special congratulations to North Campus Social Studies and avid teacher Mark Domshott, who was named the 2023 Teacher of the Year at a ceremony last week. Also, congratulations, North Campus Kitchen Manager Natalie Sogdalen, who was surprised last week with the news that she was selected to receive the Minnesota School Nutrition Association Hero Award. Building and district colleagues gathered to honor her for this impressive achievement. So this was a statewide award, so it was a big deal, and she was completely surprised by it. So hats off to Natalie. She does a great job. All right, the high school spring production of Clue, based on the iconic 1985 movie that was inspired by the classic board game, will take place at 7:00 p.m. each night, May 31st through June 3rd. A 2:00 p.m. matinee will also take place on June 3rd. The show will take place at the Century College West Campus Theater. Tickets will be on sale soon at Bitly/WBL box office. The district has been awarded a grant of $122,000 through the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Office of Traffic Safety for the installation of stop-arm cameras on all 36 school district buses. Data from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety estimates that statewide drivers disregard stop arms more than 100,000 times in a given school year. A variety of end-of-the-year student celebrations are taking place throughout the district these days, with the last day of school, June 9th, quickly approaching. Congratulations to those students who are celebrating the end of an era, whether it's graduating from high school, middle school, elementary, kindergarten, or preschool. And hang in there, parents. Something I can say as a parent to a senior myself, enjoy the last days of the school year and have a safe and relaxing summer. Hard to believe we're already looking forward to graduation. All right, that's my report.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Kasmatzek? All right. Thank you very much. We will move into our first discussion item, D1, Building Assets, Reducing Risks. BAR update. Dr. Gillespie.
Good evening Chair Ellison, members of the board, Dr. Kasmatzek, Ms. Collier. Tonight, I'm excited to be here to present an update around BAR, Building Assets, Reducing Risks, and highlight a video that was just done, and introduce some special guests who are here in the front row, and I'll introduce them in a little bit. So first, I wanted to remind us why BAR. BAR we have in our district, we have in three of our elementaries, both of our middle schools and our high schools. And so BAR is the most researched intervention that we have to help us with our students and culture and climate at schools. And so BAR, when we just went to their conference, shared this graphic that I think is really important for us to keep at the forefront of why we're doing this work. We've been fortunate to receive grants at the high school level from the Gates Foundation. Both of our middle schools, we were able to use our learning loss dollars for ESER, and then we received Anderson Foundation grants for two elementary schools. And then Willow, our latest addition, we found money in our district professional development. But it is because of these impacts. It has 14 student impacts from increasing math achievement, more credits earned, higher GPA, reducing chronic absenteeism. Teacher impacts increased self-efficacy, view of school support, use of data, collaboration with colleagues. And there's really continuous data and research that's been done around this huge systemic initiative that we're implementing. But I think it's really important for us not to underscore. This isn't me exaggerating. I've heard American Institute of Research talk about this two years now at conference. And so what we're doing is really transforming our system. And it is because of the hard work of our educators and leaders that we're seeing so much success. But I really want to make sure that we understand, in education, we don't often see this level of research. We don't around interventions. We don't have the kind of money that private sector does around research and development. And so the fact that BAR as an organization keeps leaning into this and keeps seeing these statistically significant outcomes is really, really big. And we are the second district-wide adoption ever of BAR across the country, and so it's something that we really should be proud of at White Bear Lake. As I mentioned, we have BAR in three of our elementary schools, Lake Gears, Badness Heights, Willow Lane, both of our middle schools, and then our high school. Our goal is to have BAR in all nine of our elementary schools, and possibly look at implementing some aspects of it at early childhood, ALC, and tech. It's really important, and each time we've implemented it at a school, we've had the staff and principals be excited about implementing. So there's no deadline that I have by this date, but it is about partnering with those principals. The more you hear from the staff members who are here and our students in this video that you'll get to see, you'll see that it continues to build momentum around BAR. And so we do have schools that are interested in it and keep looking for grants so that we can make sure that we can also be fiscally responsible as we implement this. BAR started at our high school, and then quickly we realized we wanted to implement it in both middle school and elementary. So at the national conference, which we were able to go to because of some grant funding and also some district professional development funds that I set aside, they featured our district and did a video. And tonight, I'd like to share that video with you. So Marissa's going to help me. White Bear Lake is a district north of the Twin Cities in Minnesota. We serve approximately 8,300 students, K-12 district, and we have nine elementary schools, two middle schools, and then our high schools.
We have a really close community. There's a lot of history, tradition, that people are very proud of. But at the end of the day, the students who come into our school have a purpose of something much bigger than themselves. They love being a part of everything from athletics to activities to academics. We have a lot of great engagement with our families, community. It really is a very all-encompassing environment. It's a great place to work.
The best part of 5th grade is you have a great community and you have awesome, great friends.
What drew me to BAR and our district to BAR is that BAR has, you talk about each and every student from a strengths-based model, and really supports teachers and how they have those conversations. And so really BAR is about looking at the whole student and being able to dive deeply into what are the students' strengths. And when students are struggling, how do we help our teachers? Really think about what other interventions can they build on as a team so that they feel supported in doing that?
I feel like we all seem to be getting to know the students at a deeper level. And it's not just my classroom, homeroom students. I'm getting to know the students who are in 1st grade, 2nd grade, and so on. I feel like they are, the meetings that we have give us a chance to all put our heads together, okay, how can we best serve and help these students?
The best part of this school is definitely the teachers. They're all super kind.
Something I like about how the teachers at White Bear Lake teach, they try to like connect with the students other than just teaching the subject and become part of their lives and affecting their lives.
When students leave North Campus, I am really hoping that through the BAR process, they have developed confidence and that they have developed some of those soft skills that have been taught naturally through the process.
What BAR has brought to our staff is really a sense of belonging as well as a sense of collaboration. To be able to go and sit at a table and to be able to talk with other educators about a student as opposed to just content, just curriculum, yes, those are super important, yes, we have to do those. But to be able to pause and to talk about a child and the things that make a child great, and their strengths and their assets, and how we can help that kid be able to achieve more than they would have before, that's what inspires educators. That's what people want to do. That's why they wake up in the morning to come to school.
The block meetings have made us be a little bit more intentional about the conversations we're having about students, and really getting to the students that we might not always talk about.
The way we structure the small block, big block meetings has changed the way that teachers operate together. We seem much more like a team than we did before we implemented BAR.
I feel like, especially going district-wide with the BAR process, the beauty is that it's been able to fit to each school's individual needs. All of our schools, especially our elementary schools, have different needs and populations that they work with. But the model allows us to build upon the systems that we already have in place, but bolster them to have just that common language, that common theme, to really run through our entire district.
I've been in education a long time, and I've seen a lot of things sort of come and go. BAR is a thing that I think has sticking power. It has a lot of really positive impacts on both students and staff, and therefore the community as a whole.
So having spent three years in BAR, it's got something for any kind of teacher. Any kind of teacher can benefit from this. It doesn't matter if you're a young teacher, if you're middle-aged, or towards retirement, you can still benefit from it. It's really a wonderful program for teachers and students both.
I have Joel Held here with me, and I also have some friends from our district who participated, who presented at our national conference. And so we had five people present on the work that we're doing here, which is really a huge testament to the work that we're doing across our system. And so Catherine Peterson, principal at Sun, Central, sorry, Catherine, I know which school you're at, Central Middle School, presented on some of the structures that you heard in the video around big block and community connect, and really how the role of administration is there. We had Amber Rusted, a central middle school teacher, talk about beyond I-time. And we've talked about that before with you, but those are the lessons that our teachers teach. And so Amber was able to share what she's done. Increasing staff buy-in for Joel Held, Associate Principal at White Bear Lake Area High School North Campus. Amanda Schrader, White Bear Lake Area High School North Campus teacher, talked about successful interventions, which is really huge, especially as we look at K-12 across our system. But that's something secondary we've struggled with as a profession. And so how do we really dive in? And to have Amanda teach that was really great. And then finally, BAR at the middle school. And so we had Tammy Dobbins, central middle school teacher, was a panel participant. And so I wanted them here to get honored. They're also here, they're not going to each present about what they did. They're here to answer questions if you have it, but really did a nice job of representing the great work that we've done here. And then Joel has taken leadership across our district to make sure that we talk K-12, what's going well, what are opportunities for us, how does he keep me in the loop on how we can remove barriers. And then BAR really does fidelity checks. And I think that's important because when we have something this big, how do you make sure that you're implementing it well, and that we, which will increase the likelihood that we see the outcomes that the research has. And so each one of our schools has coaches that are assigned to them. And then I meet every other week with a BAR district facilitator who updates me on their progress and then gives me updates on things that we can do to better support at the district level. So we are now available for any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Gillespie or the BAR team? Ms. Lloyd?
What are those fidelity checks? What do they consist of?
Good afternoon. So the fidelity checks, one of my favorite things about BAR, first of all, I just, I have to say, this is so fun. It's like my fourth time I've talked to you about BAR. And when we started, it was, this was December of 2019 when Dr. Gillespie first brought it to our attention. And we had no idea at that time that the pandemic was coming. So we had no idea how badly we would need BAR. And so when we started it in the fall of 2020, I was probably one of two people in the whole district that even knew what it was. So whenever I would tell people I was the BAR coordinator, they would say, all right, which one? White Bear Bar or 617? So the fact that we have colleagues up here who are presenting at national conferences for 750 educators from 15 different states that know what this is, is a testament to the work that we've done as a district. Really cool. So one of my favorite things about the fidelity checks, a lot of programming that you can join in education. You pay a lot of money, you get trained, and then they kind of, it's a little bit of a, here's your binder, now go forth and do it. So what I love about BAR is that you have coaches that come to your school, and they meet with your coordinator weekly. And then they, when they do site visits, they will submit fidelity checks for, I believe it's eight components, that they look at, everything from your community connection to your I-times. There's a lot of, there's eight components. So they will provide an outside perspective saying, hey, and they're not looking necessarily at our student-specific data, but they are looking at our trends as a whole. So they're able to say, hey, you know what's really great is this, this, and this. And we also notice this, this, and this. And so I can tell you from an administrative perspective, being able to meet with my coordinator, with Ms. Schrader often, it helps me get a pulse on our school, different than when you're kind of stuck in the day-to-day and you're looking, you're talking about the same students or different students, and you're working with teachers. So that's what the fidelity checks are. It's, I think we get about three of them a year at a minimum. So for each site.
Thank you.
Just as a follow-up, we have our own data on the students that are in BAR. Is that something that's, that's available to the teachers to see, I assume? Because if we're going to see if we're having an impact, we need to see what the data says.
Yeah, so we hold some qualitative and quantitative data about students, but that's exclusive to the teachers who share those students. Right? So it's really need-based only. So you have access to it if it's your student. But we do believe strongly that if you're a language arts teacher, knowing how they're doing academically in their science class impacts your ability to talk to them quantitatively. You're looking at grades and failure rates and numbers and things like that. But then qualitatively, hearing from a socialized teacher that, oh, I learned about this, something that's going on at home, mom shared that there, you know, something is going on. Now you can share that qualitative information, and now I, as a language arts teacher, benefit from that. So that's definitely, it's kind of kept in-house, but it's definitely part of our group conversations, definitely.
The other part is there's three levels of meetings that they do, small block, big block, and community connect. And there's data in each one of those meetings. So the smaller teams look at data, then a bigger team looks at data, and then that community connect. It's just who is invited to those meetings, around the levels of support, but each one is centered around student data.
What's the data that you're looking at? What tells you that it's successful versus not successful?
All of those outcomes that we're looking at. So we're looking at student attendance, we're looking at student, at the high school, student grades, they're looking at behavior data, they're looking at all the data that we look at as a system. And so how you impact that, along with qualitative data in terms of teacher, how students are engaging in class, how teachers are feeling about success in classrooms. And so they're looking at that at a smaller level, and then we keep thinking about, as we implement this, what does that look like? Because often as a system, we get the lagging data. So it takes a while for those bigger pieces of data that we look at to move. And so how are we tracking what's implementing in terms of impacting our math data, our reading data, our graduation rate? And all of those also are impacted by BAR. It's just that will be the final data to move after all these other smaller pieces of data have moved.
Thank you.
Ms. Strifogi?
I'm wondering, like, an example of what kinds of lessons? Like, are they leadership? Are they community building? Are they social-emotional learning types? Like, what kinds of lessons?
Yeah, they kind of like touch on all the different parts.
Can you, could you please introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Amber Rustand. I teach 6th grade language arts at Central.
Thank you.
So like, the I-times kind of focus around all the different social-emotional, kind of like, just getting the kids to recognize their strengths so that they can take that and apply it in other areas. In 6th grade, we do a lot with, like, with strengths, recognizing strengths in others, who can be a good friend, how you can take what you know what, apply it other places throughout your day. One of the strengths ones that I did, the kids just, they really liked it. They took it, and like, you could see them applying it in their other classes too. When I said something like, well, what is a strength you have? They're like, well, I'm really good at math, but I'm not very good at language arts. But when I'm in my math class, I feel successful. So it's like, okay, boom, there you go. So I don't know. They go, I don't know what the other subject areas do, so.
Hi, Tammy Dobbins. I'm the BAR coordinator at Central. So it's really a lot about, like, having kids get to know themselves a little bit more, but building relationships and community, that student-to-student connection, that teacher-to-student connection. And those are the really important kind of pillars that we look at. So relationships and data are the two big pillars of BAR. And I-times, those times where teachers are facilitating those lessons, are when we're helping to build those social-emotional competencies. So responsibility, goal-setting, helping, you know, again, the, building that community among each other. And it's really about, like, looking at the progression of how am I building those skills in that space? So it, we use the DESA as well, and we, that's the data that we use to help guide some of those lessons that we do. And so they're very purposeful and, like, intentional with looking at, like, what are students going to benefit the most at? So we can continue to identify their strengths and build on those as well.
Thank you. I think it was Dr. Newmaster and then Ms. Daniels.
Thank you. A variety of, the I-time, to me, sounds like advisory time, sort of. It's a scheduled time. It's the same group of kids all the time, right? Do they carry it from year to year? Have they had a group that moves, or does it stay with the teacher? I just wonder, as you build relationships, how does it flow into the next year?
That's a great question. I think our different sites, some of them do it differently. I would say, I can speak for the high school. We actually have our content teachers to pause momentarily to do some of the I-time lessons. So if you're a language arts teacher, you're going to do it with all of your sections of it in a day, but you rotate when you do it. So really, as far as how, if I was an individual teacher, I'm only really giving one of these lessons a month, maybe. But the aggregate of that, if I do it a month and the science teacher doesn't, you know, and you rotate it, the students get a very holistic experience. So as far as transferring that knowledge, it's a great question, and it's one that we talk about a lot. So right now, actually, my coordinator, we were just talking about today, how do we take, how do we take information that we've learned? We have so much knowledge about these 9th graders. And so how do we use this next year? How do we pass this along? And it's pretty astounding, actually, when you pause and step back and learn about how much we know about these students and their strengths in particular, that I would say we wouldn't have known without the BAR programming model. And so now we can pass it on. So if you're a 10th grade teacher in our building, well, now you're kind of gifted a whole knowledge of, they love archery, and they have two dogs, and maybe they lost a parent last year. And so many things that you can know about a student is really incredible, so.
Dr. Newmaster, do you have a follow-up?
I do. That answers how, you know, you look at the progression and how it transfers. I'm just wondering, obviously, personal information about individual students is accessible to the people that work with those students. But you also have data that's a larger amount as you look at impact. And I'm wondering, you know, from the top, I And I'm wondering, you know, from the top, I assume bar has some organizational way that they say, this is what we're looking at, so you can see what the impact is on attendance, whatever else you're measuring, grades, graduation, and see that it is the impact of bar.
Yeah, that's what, when I meet every other week with the district, they give me, they rank our buildings just like we do our students. So yeah, level zero is students you're not concerned about. We have buildings that are level zero, and then same around implementation. And then we talk about what that lagging data is. And so how do you look at system-wide attendance? How do you look at system-wide grades? And we're looking at that, but when, how do you know when it really is about bar? And so this next graduating class, next year, class of 2024, yes, will be the first class that had four years, or is it this year's class?
Next year.
Next year's, class of 2024, will be the first ninth grade class that entered the school year with bar. And so looking at that graduation rate, obviously COVID and other things that were beyond our control could have impacted things, but we've been looking at grades prior to having bar, but seeing some really great success with students and their bar teachers. Those iTime lessons are really connecting with your teacher, matters a lot. And then also, the systemic approach of having students who've been in middle, or elementary school, and so that data, middle school and now high school, what does that also do? So, absolutely.
Ms. Daniels.
I just wanted to say, it's just, it sounds so great to have an intervention where students don't have to qualify. They just, they just get help. And because you get to know them and you get to know their strengths or other things about them that might be interfering with their ability to concentrate on school. As a former special ed teacher, there were kids that we knew needed help, but somehow they didn't qualify for special education or 504 plan or anything else. So we knew those kids needed some kind of intervention. So this is more than an intervention, it's really a culture shift from what I'm listening to. And it's just so exciting and so great to hear that it's really making a difference for students. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. And we'll move into our next discussion item, D2, the first reading of school board policies. The process here is that policies come to the policy committee once a month, and we review those. And then they come to the board for a first reading, which is these tonight. And this is an opportunity for the board members to offer any suggestions or edits, and then they will come back to us next month for a second reading. So for our first reading, we've got policies 535, 604, 608, 624, 701.1, and 709. So board members, if you have any comments or edits, please direct us to the page in the board packet so we can all be on the same page. Any edits or updates?
No.
Daniels?
I don't have any edits or updates. I just always, you know, the service animal one, I'm always very, I don't know, I get a kick out of because it's not only service dogs, but it's miniature horses.
Yeah.
And so I just, if you ever read that policy, not that we've ever had a miniature horse in the school, and we probably ever will because it's such an unusual thing, but I just think it's, you know, they are out there and they are doing work for people. And I just thought it was interesting, if you're a policy, kind of a nerd, you might want to read it because it's really great.
That's one of the ones that kind of falls under the category of things you didn't know, you didn't know as a school board member. Yeah, service ponies. All right. Any other questions or comments about Dr. Newmaster?
My only comment is, thank you to the policy committee for going through these with a fine tooth comb. What is it, the cycle is about every four or five years or something like that?
It depends. Some of the policies are annual.
Yeah.
So we have to look at them every year. Some of them are every couple of years. Some of them are based on updates we get from the Minnesota School Board Association. Some of them are based on the time of year or things happening, like during COVID, we had to update a bunch of different policies, but yeah.
I think it's, it's good for us all to realize that it's a cycle that happens, there's a plan, and it's a good thing to look at because life changes, culture changes. And thank you to the committee that gets up crackadon and does this.
I love being on the policy committee. I'll just put that on the record. It's my favorite. All right. Any other comments? All right. So we will move into our operational items. Operational item E1, action on bids for Bald Eagle Avenue road improvements. Mr. Wald.
Good evening, Chair Ellison, members of the board, Dr. Kasmercheck, Ms. Collier. In your packet tonight is a recommendation letter for the Bald Eagle Avenue Road improvements, which are scheduled to take place this summer. There were four bidders for this project, came in at $419,000, the low bid. And our construction management team, Kraus Anderson, has gone through all the bids and feel comfortable with Batuminous Roadways winning this contract. And so the recommendation is that the board accept the overall bid for the Bald Eagle Avenue Road improvements as presented to Batuminous Roadways Incorporated for a total amount of $418,000.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
Agreed.
A motion by Ms. Strifogi and a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or discussion?
I have a quick question.
Dr. Arcand.
Can you just remind us what they're doing for the road improvements? I mean, what updates are we approving? Are they doing?
Oh, sure. That's not the first question I expected from you.
Yeah, I wasn't going to ask the budget one.
I know that will come. Yes, so the improvements to Bald Eagle Avenue, well, as we've purchased properties on Bald Eagle Avenue, the water pipes that go under the road that tie into the main water pipe are, were required to disconnect those and then cut it off a few feet away from the main. So for all of those houses or properties that we purchased, all of those water pipes need, so the road needs to get dug out, the pipe needs to get cut and broken away from the main water. So that will happen. There will also be turn lanes installed, a turn lane, southbound turn lane, a northbound turn lane. That'll widen the road at the entrance, which will allow for traffic to flow better on Bald Eagle. We know that since we opened, we moved traffic to the west side of the building in February, that it's been some, you know, there's been some difficult moments in the morning and then again in the afternoon. So this should help it flow better next, when we open in 2024. Well, as of, you know, this fall, it should flow better. They'll, then they'll grind and overlay the whole street, fix any sidewalks and curbs that need to be repaired, and finish the landscaping, and it'll be done.
Thank you. You can ask it.
Okay. Any other questions? Where did this come in under budget?
Thank you for asking that question. The budget, the budget amount for this was $450,000, came about 7% lower at 419. It's part of a larger budget of off-site improvements. So a line item that we have for any road work, and you know, we had road work at North Star when we installed the traffic light on Highway 61. The traffic study recommended a traffic light on Highway 61 and 8th Street. And then there'll be similar work to what we're doing on Bald Eagle right now will be done on Division Avenue next summer. And then 8th Street, there'll be some work on 8th Street as well. All the Highway 61, 8th Street, and Division Avenue projects are all in the design phase right now. So it was part of the conditional use permit from the city that we would work with the city to redesign the roads, 8th Street and Division Avenue. And then, and so we'll continue to work with the city now. We're just kind of in the early phases of that road design.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Daniels.
Then just to, I think we talked about this when we were talking about the 61 light and the improvements up by North Star, but after we make the initial improvements, we don't maintain after that. We make the improvements and then the city or the township?
Yeah. MinDOT maintains the, maintains the lights, yeah, yeah, and the roads. Yeah, then we're done, once we step out of it.
Once you get initial improvements, then we're done?
Yeah.
As a district? Okay.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Ms. Boyd.
You said Division was going to be next summer?
Right. Yeah, Division's a mess, but there's a lot of work being done on that side, and will continue to be throughout the fall and spring. So there's a lot less traffic on that side of the building right now.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the table. And so I would ask the clerk to please call the roll for a vote.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strifogi?
Aye.
Thompson? Aye. Arcand?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Wald.
Thank you.
Move into operation item E2, action on teachers-on-call agreement. Mr. Mons.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Kasmercheck. We spent a fair amount of time at our last study session talking about the opportunity that we had to work with teachers on call to hopefully make some substantial improvements in our fill rates with our substitute programming. And so I'm bringing that back here today with just a couple of extra notes and asking for approval. One of the things that I just wanted to say is we do have a communication plan that we'll be working through here this week. As soon as the board takes actions, we'll be making sure that our substitutes, who are highly valued, stay in the know. And another note that I made in our last discussion that I'll make again is, we're really going to take every opportunity at our disposal to make that transition as easy as possible for all of our current substitutes that are working with us right now. So again, our overarching goal here is to see significant improvements in our sub-fill rate. And we've tried, I think, all of the creative solutions that we can try at this point. So this is our next logical step, as we've been in a pretty significant competitive disadvantage as all of our neighbor districts are with teachers on call.
Okay, so the recommended action is to approve the agreement with teachers on call. Could I get a motion to approve?
Agreed.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Boyd. Any further discussion or questions?
I have a quick question.
Dr. Arcand.
When will this start? Will you begin with the program?
So we'll be starting that in the fall. So we'll have the spring and summer to transition with the effective implementation in the fall.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Questions? All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
And into our final operational item, E3, action on school board policies. This is the second reading for 201, 202, 203, 203.2, 203.5, 203.6, 414, 415, and 605. And we usually approve these in one fell swoop, so I would ask for a motion to approve.
Agreed.
A motion by Ms. Boyd and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcand. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of approving the policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. We will move into the final item on our agenda, the board forum. This is an opportunity for board members to share things that are going on around the district and activities that they might be involved in and their role as school board members. And so would anybody like to offer anything up for board forum? Ms. Thompson.
I would just like to say, last week I was invited to Willow to participate or watch the third grade music performance. It was a lot of fun. I'm so thankful for that opportunity, and the kids did a great job. It was really fun to see them perform, and they even like choreographed some of their own dances, so. Dr. K already mentioned it, but just to really reiterate, what Willow does with Donatellis in our community is just such a great opportunity. The kids go to Donatellis, they interview with them, they have to do mock resumes. It's really a wonderful learning opportunity for our students. So if you're available tomorrow, the following Tuesday, the 16th, and then the 23rd, from 11 to 1, I would, you know, ask that you go in and let them cook for you, serve you, and seat you at your tables. And then finally, May 18th, which is next Thursday, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, to all of our Indian Ed families, there will be an Indian Ed end-of-the-year gathering here at the District Center Auditorium and out in the front grass, so. Hope to see everybody there.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Newmaster.
I will mention that I have a dinner party going to Donatellis tomorrow with some retired staff. And it always is fun to have the kids seat you and tell you a joke. You know, they often have planned their patter. And I don't know if someone has told them that all waiters and waitresses, all servers tell jokes, but they think they do. But it's a great experience, and it has them go through the job process. So it's not such a strange thing when you apply for your first real hard-time job. And then I would invite people to participate in all sorts of things, including the soon-to-come fantastic Otter Carnival. And they have that on their site. My brain is blanking. And I would also invite you all to come to, I think it's the 38th or 39th, in a White Bear School, Chang Mi Korean Dance Drum and Music Recital. And that will be on the 11th, a Sunday. Thank you to the custodians willing to work on a Sunday. And I think it's a fun thing. A lot of the kids are part of our school district, and it's a fun cultural thing to participate in. So we just have lots going on. Thanks.
You.
Ms. Daniels and then Dr. Arcand.
I just wanted to mention that last Saturday, our district, in collaboration with North St. Paul Maplewood, Oakdale, and Matamidi and Stillwater, put on, or helped put on, or helped, had a powwow that was put on by other people, but we all attended. And there were community members from all over that came. And it was from 11 till about 4, I think, in the afternoon. And there were, was a color guard, a lot of drumming, dancing. And some of our graduates who were able to attend that day received a blanket and recognition for their graduation. So that was really great. And I can't really estimate crowds, but I would say at least between 300 and 400 people were there. Just really a great turnout. And we had some food trucks and vendors, and it was just fantastic for everybody who was able to come. So thanks for those that attended. And if it comes up next year, I would encourage people to try to make it.
Dr. Arcand.
About the second week of April, we had a Earth Day meeting, basically a presentation by the Ramsey County League of Local Governments. And I just need to give a big shout out and thank you to Dan Roser. He came and talked about how, when he started, he looked at the garbage that was being put into our system through the cafeteria, and how he worked out and found a way to have that garbage go to a pig farm or other farms like that, saving us a significant amount of funding. And the members at the Ramsey County League of Local Governments were very interested in what he had to say. He was, he was awesome, and so I want to thank him. The other thing I want to say, it's the first day of Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to thank all the teachers and educational assistants that help our students achieve what they're achieving and get into, you know, the next year and make them career and college ready. So thank you, teachers, for everything you do.
Ms. Daniels.
More thing, there's just a few other retirements that were added to the agenda. And I just wanted to thank the people for their service, the educators who are in, are retiring this spring. So thank you very much, educators and staff members that have given so much.
Ms. Strifogi.
Also just want to just mention, Donatellis, I went last week, and one thing that I didn't hear mentioned here was that they shared that they now have people employed by them that went through the fifth grade. Yeah, the fifth grade Donatellis. So, so I told them they were early recruiting.
Grow your own.
of Jazz just down the hall in just under an hour, starts at 7:00. So it's the jazz bands from middle school and the high school, and then there's, I mean, pick a day, there's probably a band or orchestra concert. So please go and support our students. I just want to say again to Lauren, not every school board has a student liaison in the state, and we are so grateful for our student liaisons, and you've done a really great job this year. And I also wanted to thank our teachers for the first day of Teacher Appreciation Week. And last week, I, was it last week or the week before?